Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the 12th of April, 6:10 PM, and I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to move to approve the consent agenda?
This is Sue. I move to approve the consent agenda. Items three through six.
Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote. Ron?
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Public open forum. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to speak at the public open forum? Hearing none. We'll move on to the Planning Commission report. And our report tonight is from Commissioner Higlin. She's the liaison.
Thank you. I'm not going to go over in detail everything that happened because we were all there. There were four public hearings that were held at the Planning Commission, and I'm going to start with the one for Clear Channels Dynamic Billboard. Since we have a representative here, we'll take care of that one first. The Planning Commission had recommended approval of the 20-year IUP. So we have information in our packets about that. We can discuss it as decide whether we're going to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation or if we have other ideas.
So would you like to come up to our table, grab a microphone, and do your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Matthew Weiland with Clear Channel.
Pull your mic a little closer.
Is that better?
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Matthew Weiland with Clear Channel Outdoor. We office at 3225 Spring Street in Minneapolis, Minnesota.
Thank you. And do you want to walk through a little bit what you're asking for tonight? Kind of a repeat show of last week.
No problem. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're certainly, as you know, we've been in the city a long time and a long-term presence here. So we're excited about the opportunity to upgrade and modernize one of our billboard locations to the dynamic displays. It really is where our industry is going, an evolution from them actually being hand-painted displays to now we're getting to dynamic displays. We want to do that for a number of reasons. You know, we take our time to really make sure we're putting them in good corridors, good commercial growing corridors. It's a significant investment to change that technology. But the technology really does allow more flexibility to our advertisers, both in messaging and the amount of time they buy. And it also allows us to further our commitment to community service. Every city we're in, we provide public service announcements on the signs, as is required by your interim use permit, if that's approved tonight. But in addition to what we do for cities, we do a lot with law enforcement and emergency management. We do things like weather warnings. And probably one of the basic examples of things we do for law enforcement are Amber Alerts. We're one of the quickest ways to get that message out. People have been taken, they're in a car, and we can get that up right away. I just put up my, we, my company just put up our 75th digital billboard in Dayton a couple of weeks ago. We currently have 75 of them in 18 different Twin Cities communities. They've been operating since 2006. We put one up in Menetaka. So we've proven we can operate them safely. That's one of our biggest focuses. Obviously, we know they're not safe. We couldn't operate them. So there's a lot of things in place if you have any questions on that. But I think we've proven they can operate safely. The process we go through on this specific location, because the boards aren't that old, we just need to do some reinforcements to the structure, which should just be adding some braces. I think we got to redo some bolts. I shouldn't say just. There's some things they got to do. Engineers reviewed it all, but we don't need to take it apart. We don't need to rebuild the sign. On this specific location, one of the things I indicated I would look at is also moving the ladder. I know there was some discussion that came up at the Planning Commission meeting where our ladders are. You know, when these structures were initially designed 20 years ago, they were designed to operate a certain way. So when we go back and retrofit them, there's things we need to look at. So in this case, I can look at moving the ladder. It'll require adding a walk under, it's called, and some other changes. The sign itself, the other thing you'll probably notice is I think we're going to take the front catwalks off them as part of that upgrade. And then, you know, it just, we selfishly are, we believe that digital billboards just look better. They just look cleaner. And the thing I'm very cautious of is we want to make sure and we're good commercial corridors where we can interact and bring vibrancy in life to that corridor and not be causing issues for residential areas. So we like this location. So yeah, we're excited for the opportunity through your interim use process to hopefully upgrade the sign here.
Very good. Are there any questions?
I've got one for you, Matt. I know we're talking about this new IUP. What about the ladders on the other ones?
So the things we've talked about is ways to address, you know, everyone has a subjective view on how things look. But the things we've talked about, and I'm certainly willing to get opinions on, is there's concern where the ladders cover up the logos on that side of the sign. And things we've done in other places, we've painted the ladders to match the color of the panels. They just kind of blend in with the panel. We could certainly look at lowering logos below the ladder. And the other option we can look at, which out front did on one of their signs, is kind of hanging them and hanging them from the front of the sign and kind of hanging them down from the structure. So there's, you know, a couple of different things we could look at to address that.
Do you have any close to the Columbus area that have done that, painted? I just don't understand when you paint the ladder the same color that you're going to see Columbus. It's hard to see it now.
Yeah. It just kind of disappears. That's what we did out at the airport with our ladders. Got to think other communities. I mean, what's really different in your communities, generally when we put facades, and we designed that from the bottom up before we put it in. Yours is one of the only communities we've retrofit existing displays to put facades on. But yeah, we could, you know, if the paint doesn't address the concern, we could certainly look at either lowering those logos or possibly hanging, hang them out in front as long as, you know, as long as there's enough room between that and the ladder, which I think there would be, we could look at that as an option, too.
I have one other. Do you have one of these digital ones that are close by with the facade, kind of like ours? I mean, do you have a picture of what it's going to look like after you're done here? Or is that facade that we got on there now is going to be there?
Yeah, the facade's not going to change. We don't have to do anything below the head, so the facade won't change. On this specific location where we're doing the conversion, we are going to look at moving the ladder to the back or away from the freeway because we're already upgrading the sign. We can look at the engineering on what it would take to move that specific ladder.
Well, I was just wondering, they're not going to have a big pole supporting it off to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, you won't notice. All the changes are going to be behind, will be behind the faces. You won't notice any of the reinforcements that are being installed. Good question. Other than there will be, there'll have to be a catwalk kind of hanging down, but it'll be away from the freeway. But we'll need a catwalk to walk under to get between the displays to transition to.
So have you ever changed one over like this? Like this one's going to happen? Or the other digital ones where they just put up digital right of start? I mean, it's like a conversion kit, right?
Yeah. No, we do do a lot of conversions. I mean, our preference is always to try to use as much of the existing structure as we can as long as it meets engineering. So yeah, we've done a lot of engineering. It just depends on, you know, where they, when they were built and how they were built, when they were initially put in.
So your photos that you gave us in the application, they'll be just like that except they'll be digital and...
Yeah, it'll look just like it does now except there'll be digital displays on it. But the structure itself won't look different. Other than, as I said, there'll be a little catwalk. You probably won't even notice that'll hang down behind it.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I have a question for Elizabeth. So how, I know the question came up, the same question that Ron asked in the Planning Commission, and you've said like, well, we could do this, or we could do this, or we could do this. So it's been, what, a year since we issued the IUPs for the static? And we're still talking about it. I really, I really want to like close the door on this and come back with something that we all like before we move on to something new. I mean, I'm not opposed to your dynamic at all, but I feel frustrated that we're still talking about this a year later. And, you know, I'm having a hard time envisioning what a catwalk lower down is going to look like. So I feel like, one, we should figure out what is going to, what is going to be done to get the existing static signs in compliance with their CUP or IUP, sorry. And then I'd like a picture of what this, or maybe if you can even point and say, oh yeah, down in Blaine, they have one that we retrofitted, and it's going to look just like that one. For me, that would be really helpful because I don't visualize things very well. I have to kind of see them. So that was a question to you about how do we, how do we, do we, can we approve this with the contingency that he has to get, you know, he has to fix the ladder sign problem on the existing CUPs? Or do you do that first and then we can approve? I mean, I don't know what the proper order is. Does, I mean, am I making sense what I'm asking?
Yes. I'm hesitant to answer because I think I know the answer, but I'm not sure. But I think in the past, I've been told that we have to look at this application independently than compliance issues. We can certainly let the applicant know that we have concerns. But I think we'll, we look at this application independently. I think we've had ongoing conversations about the ladders, and I think if we can come up with a definitive plan, I think that would be helpful. And I realize those are different options. I don't know if you're waiting for answers from your crew to make those determinations or you're looking at costs. I don't know what the different factors are with painting the ladder or moving the ladder to the back for the existing billboards.
Certainly that. And I appreciate the question. And I, again, I start with, you know, I think it's a subjective view. I mean, it's, being out of compliance is the, I mean, I feel like that's a strong term. We've put a huge investment in this community and those spaces, and we certainly appreciate our ability to be here. And we want to come up with a solution. And I guess I'm, I'm looking for direction from you guys, what you would rather see. You know, unless you want to see some, I guess we could try to do some mockups of what it could look like. If we just lower the logo, it would just, we'd lower the logos below the ladders. You know, or we could try hanging them in front. But that's, again, I think a subjective preference thing on which you guys may want to see in the community.
So now I have another question, probably for Bill. So the 120-day limit's up in June. So can we defer the vote until we get something back that we can actually see and agree to to fix the current IUP signs?
Mr. Mayor and Council, Elizabeth is correct. You have to take this application and decide this application on its merits. If there is a compliance issue on the other boards, that is a separate matter and should be addressed separately. So if there, I don't know, it sounds like the proposal for this particular billboard is to move the ladder because they're investing in the structure. So that potentially would address it. If you, if you want to continue this application so you can see how it's addressed in this particular site, that would be appropriate.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would like to see it because we, I mean, one, I can't visualize it, but two, because we have this other situation that we, is unresolved. And I don't want to be talking about this a year from now. So I'd really rather see like, this is exactly what it's going to look like. Here's the ladder. Here's the catwalk. And then we can vote on it at that point. That would be my opinion.
I agree with that.
If that is the consensus of the council, then you would have a motion to continue this to your next meeting, perhaps. And it's important that it be a date certain so we, so the public, if they're following this, you know, online or otherwise, they know when this will come back.
How much time would you need to come back with something that, you know, we could look at and say, okay, yeah, this is what it's going to look like. We're cool with that. Or no, we want it a little bit different. Here's, I mean, obviously, you'd want us to do that anyway. You don't want to move signs and move things and then have us go, we don't like that.
Yeah. No, I appreciate it. In all due respect, I thought that's what we did when we, when we got the facades approved in the first place, was why we brought them to you. And we thought, what we put up is what we got approved. In this case, I mean, there's just not a lot of options. If you don't want the ladder on the side, we'll move it to the back. And I can show you examples. I can send pictures of, I think I do have some down in Blaine. It's just catwalk. But I mean, that's the only option. We need ladders. It's a health, safety, OSHA thing. We need to have the ladders. They need, in the structures, you know, these ones were built originally for the ladders to be where they are. So we got to do some engineering to retrofit that. And I'm happy to do that, and I'm happy to send you pictures. But there's really not many options on how it can be done. There's, you know, there's one way. We can safely put a catwalk for a transition underneath it. So there's just not a lot of options on how it operates.
So if we continue this for two weeks, would that give you enough time? Or would you need more?
No, that would be enough time.
Okay.
Matt, if you can send it to me, then that would, I'll put it in the next agenda packet.
So then I would move to continue discussion on the interim use permit for Clear Channel Dynamic Billboard Panels, 92780, 92781, at 9500 145th Avenue for a 20-year term until our next council meeting, which is, what's the date?
April 26.
April 26. Give us time to look at photographs of what the moved ladder and catwalk will look like on the sign.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. So we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Send your pictures early.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Then the second and third public hearing was on the Kettlecove Estates Planned Unit Development CUP and also on the preliminary plat. That public hearing is going to be continued, not the public hearing, the public hearing is not going to be continued. Discussion on this application will be continued to our joint meeting next week. Is that correct, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have any action to take on that. I do have one question for you, Elizabeth. The email that we received with the list of questions, and that person was here for the public hearing, did all of her questions get answered? Because I, when I read her email, they didn't get answered. Is somebody going to do that?
So generally, generally, that will take place in the discussion. And so Dean took notes of those questions. And if they can be answered, then they will be answered. There are some, I think, that were, and Dean will address them. They won't, you know, have a specific answer because there isn't an answer kind of thing. But yes, he took that down. And then we did have some others call. And this subdivision had three, you know, three people testify, one called today, and another person also called a couple of days ago. So it's gotten a lot of coverage. Usually don't have this much input on a subdivision.
Okay. So that's good. We'll, we'll hear more about that at next week's joint meeting. Then the last public hearing that was discussed was on the Chapter A Amendment, the Small Animal Facilities, and also the report that was done to close out the moratorium. And the action from the Planning Commission was to accept the report and to approve the Chapter 7A amendments. That's the recommendation.
Oh. Well, I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 2301 amendment. No, first we have to make the motion to accept the Commercial Pet and Small Animal Uses Report. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions?
Yes. I have a whole bunch of changes. I mean, they're not, they're more cosmetic or clarifying than they are substantial. So I don't know how you want to do that if you want me to just give them to you or if you want to hold up the approval till everybody can see them. It's duplication. It's, in some places, he's listed all of the animal-type facilities. In other places, he just lists one. And so to be consistent, they need to be all listed because the grooming one is not subject to the licensing, from my understanding. And so it's not consistent throughout that report. So I don't know how you'd like to do that.
Bill, if I'm not mistaken, we can, we can accept the report with nominal, I forget the verbiage you do.
Nonsubstantial.
Nonsubstantial edits, which is what I'm thinking that you have.
I think they have, too.
And we've, we've done that before.
Yes. That would work.
All right. So do you want to, does the motion need to be amended?
To include, to include your edits, they do.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll amend my motion. Is, and a second?
To include?
Oh, to include.
Unsubstantial.
Nonsubstantive, I guess, is the legal word. Nonsubstantive.
All right. And a second?
I'll second.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, what we mean by that is they don't change the essential meaning of the ordinance, but just clean it up.
Yep. Just cleaning it up.
All right. Then on to the ordinance itself. Do you have a bunch of edits for that?
No. Well, I have to admit, I did not read through it. So I'm going to count on everybody else to have really read through it carefully because I just didn't have time.
That one, Dean, went through pretty specifically during your joint meeting. So I think that the edits that you discussed at that meeting were all changed. So I think there was a pretty large review at that meeting.
Then I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 2301, amending Chapter 7A Amendment, 7A Amendment, Small Animal Facilities as presented. Is there a second?
This is Janet, second.
Any other questions or discussions or minor adjustments? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And then we need to do the publication.
Sure. Go for it.
So then I'd move to approve summary publication for Ordinance 23-01, amending Chapter 7A Amendment, Small Animal Facilities as presented.
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And then last item to discuss or to take action on is to accept the resignation of Frank Ramesh from the Planning Commission. There is a memo in your packet from him resigning. So I would move to accept Frank Ramesh's resignation from the Planning Commission effective April 2023.
Man, this is Sue. I'll second.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Janet. Engineer report. Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I wasn't going to have a report, but I just do want to mention that we're working on getting up to speed on Ditch 102232 issues and looking at the information that Councilmember Higlin has provided. Jim has been diligently tracking down some information and has some files. So, and Tim Olson and I are meeting tomorrow to kind of go over some of this information so that, I think we'll both attend that meeting on the 26th just to make sure that we're both up to speed on those issues, so.
Oh, that'd be good. There is a meeting also on the 17th. I saw it on the Rice Creek website, the public hearing. So they're doing another meeting, workshop meeting, just to get everybody up to speed procedurally on how, what's been done and...
Is it in regards to this topic?
Yes. So I sent an email, I did send an email to Nick asking when he needed to have our materials for their packet and also confirming that the meeting on Monday is only about this topic. And it's listed on their website that it can be attended via Zoom or in person. It is at the Watershed Office, not at the Shoreview City Hall like the other 26th meeting is. And I've been there before. It's pretty small. So I don't, my question to him is, is the public intended to only come via Zoom? Because I don't think you have a lot of room for people. But I haven't heard back from him yet.
What time is that meeting?
10 o'clock.
10. Okay.
So when I hear back, I will let you know.
Okay.
And just of notice, I did talk to Tim Kelly and Abby Lee at Coon Creek, and they are working on gathering some information for that permit. And I did receive some information today. It just wasn't, I think, as detailed as what you were looking for. They thought that they hit the highlights of the file. And their files are all electronic, but it didn't quite cover the stormwater. So I've asked it for a few more documents.
Yeah, I'm going to go through these files that Jim dug up, too, just to see what's in there, so. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Attorney's report. Bill?
Mr. Mayor and Council, just a quick update on the request to Rice Creek Watershed District. I think you all saw that the letter was submitted. The request was made not only to set aside wetland credits but for the city council to appear before the board. We thought that would be an effective way to get the message across. And so we heard back from the administrator, and they'll be scheduling an opportunity for that appearance.
Thank you. Ron, anything to report?
No, I have nothing.
I do have something. So I have a request for staff tonight. And I'll just give you a little bit of background on what I'm looking for. So I got a call from a citizen that lives down the street from me, Darwin Smith. And he wants to put an addition on the back of his house. He has a walkout, and he wants to put a four-season porch on the back. So Frank, our planner, was brought in. We found out that he needed to do a soil test because the requirement in our ordinance is that there needs to be a three-foot separation from the high-water table. And he had a company come in to do the test, and his is only 21 inches from the high-water table. So Frank worked with Kevin, the engineer, to confirm, you know, the ordinance and the test results and all of that. And although the testing, testing company said that no other cities around Columbus have that high of a requirement, that they're all afoot, I did look around a little bit, and Lino has a four-foot only on new construction. And any existing houses, it's whatever the level of the house is. So he said that is an exception. But the issue here is that the house was built in the 1980s, and prior to that, there was not this requirement for that low elevation. And so his elevation is where it's at. Can't change that. If he were to comply to the 36 inches, he'd have to build his addition 15 inches higher than, you know, his walkout, which would kind of look silly and ridiculous to have to go up a flight of steps to your addition. So he could go through the full variance process, but you know, that's, takes time and is costly. And... And so, we talked about it last night at our workshop that maybe there would be a potential for a administrative variance. So my request is for staff to draft an administrative variance for the council to approve, so Darwin doesn't have to go through all of those steps. And it seems like the common sense approach. So, questions?
No, but I just add, I mean, I thought it was a really good discussion last night. And it sounded, and Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, that this isn't the only request that has come. I mean, there's been others before that have gone through the complete variance. So this isn't just a situation that Irwin is in. There are other residents and probably others that will be looking at this too. So I think having an administrative process would be really helpful.
So in, in this case, we did talk about the administrative variance, which we have a model because we do this in a, in Chapter 14, when, when there's no other, there's no other remedy when they're replacing their subject system for an existing home. So Sue, I heard you indicate that Lino has an exception. So there's, I guess, two ways to do this. You can amend the code to have an exception, you know, for a particular year, or we can have an administrative process. And, and Bill, currently, the administrative variance is in Chapter 14 and allows us to administratively still meet all the requirements, but we can do the variance administratively. So in this case, I'm not sure what chapter it would be, whether this would be in the zoning chapter or whether we can tag it in a, in a different chapter. But I think either way, I think it's going to need a code amendment.
Correct.
And, and the other, and the other choice, which we discussed last night, was basically going through the variance process. So it would be varying from the three-foot separation to 21 inches.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you've outlined the three options. And to me, if you want to authorize your staff to come up with an administrative process, then it would take a code amendment. The amendment would be in whatever section of the code provides for the separation. And I believe that's in, is that in the zoning chapter?
It's in 7A803B.
So it's in the zoning chapter, so that would be, the administrative variance would also be in the zoning chapter. The other, the other thing you can do is you can recognize if you're going to have a number of these coming in, you can recognize what the, what the parameter is. You'd probably want some professional opinion on how far you can vary without creating a health, safety, or welfare issue. But sometimes when you get repeated variances, and maybe, maybe you try this for a year and you find out that there's repeat variances for the same thing, then you, then you provide for that exception for existing homes of a certain era that, you know, meet a, meet a separation, but not the full separation. So I think what, what Elizabeth is suggesting, if, if you direct staff to come up with an administrative process, then we'll come up with a very simple change, like, like the administrative process in Chapter 14. We'll come up with something like that in Chapter 7A. If that's the direction.
I think that's, I think that sounds reasonable. And is that something that can happen? I mean, how long does that take typically?
It would go through the same, I mean, this is, the irony is it goes through the same process, hearing and amendment that, that a full variance would go through. So the applicant, the owner, Mr. Smith, could apply for a variance and he would be on a very similar timeframe as amending the code to provide for an administrative variance. And keep in mind, at the end of the amendment of the code to provide for administrative variance, he'd still have to make an application to Elizabeth. So there'd be some time at the end of the, after the code amendment is finalized for, for Elizabeth to approve an, approve a variance. And, and when you give her that authority, she also has the authority to turn it down. So keep in mind that when you say you'd like to have her approve it, you're giving her the discretion to say yes or no. You know, it's, it's not that every application that comes in would then be approved. So, you know, my feedback, if I were talking to Mr. Smith, is, okay, we have a process. It can be an administrative process, but because it's not currently in the code today, that requires an amendment of the code. And so he cannot do what he wants to do until that code is amended and until Elizabeth can issue a variance.
I guess, I guess the pro part of that one is, if you're initiating it, it would be at the city's cost. If he initiated the variance, it would be at his cost.
That's correct. So he's, he's going to have to sit tight for, you know, whatever cycle it takes to get in front of the Planning Commission with the amendment and get it back in front of the council.
So on this, in this case, if we did the administrative variance, then it would, would it be only for his situation or would it be for all situations like his?
All.
All, anybody who, anybody who can meet the same criteria could come in and request that variance.
Okay, so that would help the city. And I think city bearing the cost of that would be reasonable, a reasonable ask.
Yeah, this, the nice thing about it is, it, it does, it, it would be for anybody in the residential district who met, who met the criteria.
Okay. All right, then, I guess I would make the recommendation for staff to move forward with that administrative variance process.
Is that, that's a form of a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that. Is there any other questions or discussion? When you write this, you write in the parameters, like you said, 1980s house or whatever. So there is real reasons to, to administer your variance to.
And in this case, there would be, there would be, there would be a floor. In other words, in this case, it might be that you, you can give administrative variance out for, for, in this case, 21 inches, but you would, you would, I'm not authorized to do anything under, under a foot. Or maybe it's a foot and a half. You know what I mean? I think we, we would get input from our engineers saying, you know, it's really, you really need to look at other parameters when you're, now you're only, you're only 18 inches above high water table because you might need drain tile, you might need some other things. And so you need more things to look at. So there'll be a bottom half, so it'll be very, there'll be very stringent requirements in the administrative variance, but I think it will cover a lot. It will cover a lot of them.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Anything else?
Nope.
Janet?
A couple of things. One is, you all have the Sunrise River WMO 2022 mini-report in your packet. This is just a summary of what was accomplished in the past year. Jamie puts this together every year. It's informational. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them, but it doesn't require any action on our part. The second thing Sunrise River WMO related is something that I talked about at the workshop yesterday. So I'm not going to go into great detail since we already talked about it. But basically, it has to do with this JPA process and our kind of stalemate that we have with Ham Lake. And the recommendation of the Sunrise Board from last week's meeting was that each of the three communities in the JPA that are not Ham Lake would go back to their boards and ask authorization to offer a compromise position to Ham Lake. And that compromise would be that we would grant their wish for their funding formula, which is Formula 4A. And we would not require that they name a council member to the board, but we would require that the JPA amendment strikes the unanimous ratification clause for the annual budget. And I have no illusions that they're going to go for this, but I think the sentiment is that it would show good faith effort, that we're trying everything to come to a reasonable conclusion with them before we venture into uncharted legal territory, troubled waters. So I would need direction from the council to, I should say, authorization from the council to offer this compromise position to Ham Lake, at least on our, on our behalf. Obviously, the other two cities have to say yes to. If they say no, then it's dead in the water. Is there any questions based on what I just said or what we talked about last night?
No.
Thank you for doing all that, though.
You're welcome.
So you like a motion?
Yes.
Want to make a motion, Sue?
Uh, what's the motion here?
It's not written down.
It's not on here.
So it'd be basically, I would, you would move to authorize me to come back saying Columbus is accepting of the compromised offer to Ham Lake. For the JPA.
I move to approve Janet to make a decision on the behalf of Columbus at the Sunrise JPA meeting to accept Ham Lake's.
No, offer Ham Lake.
Offer compromised.
A compromise, yep.
Funding formula?
Funding program, yep.
Ron, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussion? Call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Good luck. We hope they say yes.
I'll be dead by the time we get this resolved. And I won't care. Elizabeth, do you want, do you want me to talk about the code compliance or do you want to?
Um, you can start and then I'll, we can, I'll fill in.
Okay, so I think you all heard yesterday, and maybe even before then, that we had a candidate that we interviewed for the code compliance inspector. And at the end of the day, it didn't, it didn't work out. So now we're back to reposting the position. In reposting it, we also recognize that this is a brand-new program. And as all new programs, needs policies and procedures. And in order to have a framework for this inspector to work under, we need to have some of that infrastructure in place for them. And this also includes a, a module that they'll be able to input information into it. So Elizabeth and I and Sue and the Personnel Committee have talked a little bit about how, how we move this forward. And originally, the thought was that maybe the candidate that we would hire would do this, but that really is a lot of downtime. And it also is probably asking for some skills that we don't really, aren't going to really need beyond the initial startup. So it makes more sense to, to hire it out and get that taken care of. And Elizabeth has had some conversations with Megan at Larkin-Hoffman, and she has done this kind of work before and is graciously offered to do it for us. And there's a price tag of $7,500. And you can go into more detail on that if you'd like.
Sure. So in this case, Megan has set out a scope of work where she's going to work with the council and get feedback from the council and put together a policy, a procedure, and a process, which will really work well because then we can, as we discussed last night, we can then purchase the PermitWorks module that will actually track the complaints. So I think once we have the procedure laid out, it will work well because then we can track it through our computer system. So it will be computerized versus an Excel worksheet. And the software license, and we only have to buy one license, it doesn't matter how many users on it. And that price tag was $4,995, which, which does not include the annual support. The annual support is $1,495. And then there's implementing and training. What we discovered, though, is we do have a second module that we already own the license for, for planning and zoning. And so I asked PermitWorks whether they could do some training and implementation for both. And they've indicated that they will be able to do that. And of course, it's not for free. So their implementing and training is $2,995 and it's a not-to-exceed amount. So I think we're going to try to get as many people in each department trained on the different modules so that everyone could look up information. Because we have found, the more people that know how to use the reporting and do reports, even though that might not be their job, they're helpful in the end when you're trying to get data. So at the, at this time, we're looking for motions, both for the development of the policy, procedure, and process and authorization to buy the software so that we can get it installed and up and running because we, we want to be successful in recruiting a candidate in the next two to three weeks. The phones are ringing off the hook now because the snow has melted.
Well, there's two motions, right?
Yeah, there are two motions.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the Larkin-Hoffman proposal to draft code compliance inspector policy, procedure, and process for the sum of $7,500.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussion? I'll call the vote.
I just wanted to say, I think it's, this is a really good idea. And I'm, I'm glad it came to fruition because it's going to set this person up for more success than, than if we hadn't done this, so.
I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
I'll make another motion, a move to approve the purchase of PermitWorks Code Enforcement Module Software License in the sum of $4,995 with annual support of $1,495. In addition, approve the implementation and training for $2,995 for both code enforcement and planning modules.
I'll second that motion. Is there any other questions or discussion? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
Do you want me to do the city-sponsored policy too?
Um, hang on a second here, it's just, um, city-sponsored policy. I was just, Megan did, did respond, just not in time for me. So I was just reading quickly, so hopefully Bill can help me out because it was very little print.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Council, the, the issue came up whether there was a distinction between solicitation of donations and sponsorship. And Megan rewrote the policy to have them treated the same. In other words, if council members are seeking donations or sponsorships, then they wouldn't be able to vote on the contract because they would then have an interest or, let's call it a bias or an interest in the, in the contract itself. So our preference would be, based on law, based on conflict of interest law, that council members do not solicit donations or sponsorships. And so she's rewritten the policy to clarify that. So I don't know if you want to hold it over a meeting so you can see the red line or.
So would it be, if we did do that? Well, actually, there were, there were a couple of questions. One had to do with that and the other had to do with advisory boards and does that include our EDA?
It would only include your EDA if they were then going to vote on the contract. So, and since the, there's overlap between the council and the EDA, I guess it would include the EDA. I think that, that other, other appointed officials within the city would not be violating the, the rule because they are not asked to vote on the contracts.
So I'm confused about the contract voting part of it. So I thought it was more of a problem that, you know, a planning commissioner is going out and asking for donations or, or offering sponsorships. And, I mean, the way I have the sponsorship envisioned is not really in a contractual way. It's more like, you know, I'm making this up, $1,000, you get your name on the program, you get a sign next to your big old truck that's sitting next to the bouncy house that you're, that you're sponsoring or next to the petting zoo that you're sponsoring or whatever. So I, I don't know that we would have a contract for that. But I, I, you know, I guess we haven't really gotten that far in our discussion. I thought the problem was more about the perception that someone who might vote on a application for a business down the line might be, that that might be viewed as sort of like, hey, you do this, you sponsor this and, you know, we'll look favorably and you, you want to avoid that.
It's both.
Okay.
It's really, it's really the appearance of, you're always supposed to be an objective decision maker. And so it's the appearance that there's some favoritism, that's one concern. But the, also the fact that when you accept a donation, you vote to accept the donation. And when you, when you have a sponsorship, it should be reduced to a contract. So it's clear what the sponsoring. clear what the sponsoring entity is getting for their sponsorship. And so it's an exchange, you know? It may be that their name is on the program, or they're, they're announced at the event, or whatever. So it's the fact that there's an exchange, and that exchange, if it's, it's a city-sponsored event, has to be reduced to writing. And that writing most often is approved by the council. You can delegate that to staff, but, but then even that delegation is something that's, you know, part of your responsibility. So pretty consistently, cities adopt policies that don't have their elected officials, or even their appointed officials, in the role of, you know, seeking those types of benefits for the community. And, and most often, I'm sure you've heard this before, there's a 501(c)(3), and that's the, kind of the firewall, and those folks are out doing the solicitations.
So it's a problem for us for this year, because we don't obviously have a 501(c)(3). And the people that were planning to go out and, and make these contacts are the two co-chairs for the Fall Fest Committee, one of whom is the Chair of the Planning Commission, and one of whom sits on the EDA. So if, if, if we can't, if we can't utilize those two volunteers, I don't know who we can, I mean, who, who can do this? Because pretty much everybody I can think of that has the insight is on a advisory board. They're either on the park board, or the planning commission, or, you know, EDA, or council, or whatever.
I think the, the way she's written this is, is the donations, like council members are, can't do donations, neither can advisory board members. Sponsorships, she has that council members should not do sponsorships, so she's definitely, you know what I mean, removed council members from sponsorships. And then she goes on to say that, or should not engage, council members should not engage in solicitation of sponsorships, and then goes on to say that if, if, if a council member is involved with a contract, then they shouldn't vote. But it doesn't say that advisory boards can't, can't go out and, it says no donations, it doesn't say sponsorships, but Bill, maybe...
Yeah, I'd like to get her clarification, because she did this, this afternoon, trying to respond to the questions from yesterday. So I want to make sure that she's drawing that distinction, that donations could be solicited differently than, than sponsorships. I think that was your question, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and also from, from how we're structured here, if it includes, if our EDA, planning commission, park board, everybody's in the same boat, because they're all on advisory boards, or, or...
But maybe if a planning commission member wouldn't be a voting member of it?
Well, they wouldn't vote on...
They could vote on another issue.
It's more, it's more the perception that I, and I understand that. I mean, I, I get the, the need to sort of separate that, but it, it, it's really hard if you haven't set up a 501(c)(3), which nobody wanted to do for our little events.
And specifically what Elizabeth is reading, she does make a distinction in, in the way she's amended it, between donations and sponsorship. So I want to make sure that that was intentional.
Okay.
And we can bring it back next meeting with that clarity.
Yep, that sounds good.
Public Works, Jim.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Connor, Public Communication Coordinator, report.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City Administrators Report, Elizabeth.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I have a memo, an updated memo in your additions, and I have filled in the dollar figures based on last night's discussion, discussion at the workshop for the internal fund transfers due to the proceeds from the North Metro Land Development LLC land sale. And so I have designated that $25,000 would go to the Fire Hall Capital Fund, $25,000 to the Black Top Road and Maintenance Fund, and the $79,719 to the General Capital Fund. I'm looking for a motion to approve those amounts indicated from the general fund, allocated from, allocated to the general fund to pay the interfund loan, and then redistributed to those funds, which is 402, 125, and 100.
I'll make the motion to approve land sale general fund allocations as indicated in the memo dated for 11/2023, as presented. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second that.
Any other questions, anyone?
And I just want to clarify, so we took the proceeds from the land sale, and, and the policy was we would take 20%, and we would take that 20% to pay back the interfund loan between the EDA and the general fund. So that block of money is sitting out there. It will all get, it, so it, so the interfund loan will be paid back, that's one transaction. And then the other transaction, which is what you made last night, where the, what other funds the money went to. So that's why, that's why it specifically says, first it goes to the interfund, to the general fund to pay back the loan, and then you're dispersing the, the dollars from there amongst the three funds, which is 402, 100, and 125.
I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. Fiscal Disparities Report Proposal, pages 27 and 28.
At our, one of our previous meetings, our attorney made a report, as a, it was a legislative report, and Councilmember Haglen indicated that perhaps we should have a proposal to, if we were going to move forward next year, if we were going to look at amending some legislation in order to help us with fiscal disparities. And I did talk to Tammy, and she indicated that she would be able to do that report, and she gave us a proposal, which is on page 28. And so she's outlined the tasks, and the fee for, for that report was $5,750.
So Elizabeth, I just wanted to make sure, I'm thrilled that she pulled this together as quickly, and I'm really excited that she's willing to do this. I just want to make sure that she understands that we, what we're looking for is her to be able to say, in order for Columbus to break even on fiscal disparities, they would have to add this many more households. Because I, I know she says model scenarios for future, future fiscal disparities based on development assumptions. I just wanted to make sure she understood, like, we want to, we want to be able to illustrate the magnitude and the impossibility of us being able to do this, and that's, I mean, I'm, I'm making the assumption that it's going to be a huge number, and it's going to be impossible, but that's what we're looking for. I just want to make sure she, she gets that.
She does. I think the, the development assumption that she's going to take is worst case. Do you know what I mean? Like all, you know what I mean, completely developed out? Because I think that's what you proposed. We, you know, we developed all of our residential land, and we're still in the same boat. So I think, and I will, I will, I will double-check with her. I think I'm going to have a conference call between her, Bill, and myself, because I think, I think she needs to understand a little bit of the dynamics of the legislation and what we're trying to do with the report, so that she gears that report to, to that goal. And I think then it can be used as a tool, and, you know what I mean, for our process next year, if we pursue legislation. And when I was talking with Bill earlier this week, he had offered this, this other exception that I didn't really think about before, which is not try, not try to change the legislation, but to carve out an exception.
Right, yeah.
So, and to carve out an exception, you need this data, because I don't think there's, I don't think there's another way to do that.
Right, and, and that was, that was my thought, too, is that, you know, we've been told over and over again that no one's going to touch this formula, so to try to get him to change the formula is probably, you know, barking up the wrong tree. But if you can show that there's, you know, that this so grossly penalizes us, and we don't have a way to remedy the inequity, you know, then, then it's up to you guys to come up with another way that they could, I guess, lessen the impact of that, of that formula.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think it would be good to have the conversation before she starts her work, because really what I envision is a, a, almost a dynamic model, that she sets up the model, it's basically how does fiscal disparities work in, in Columbus? Take us out, you know, take us out of the big picture, have a model that, that if we change, you know, how many households, what does it render? If we get another 100, $10 million in commercial value, you know, what happens? So they, so our legislators in particular, but others, decision-makers can see that every time we approve another permit of a commercial industrial, we're hurting ourselves. You know, and, and, you know, they'll argue, well, you get 60%, you know, it's better than nothing. But, you know, we want, we want a fluid model that isn't just a one-time report from her, like, oh, here it is.
Right.
We want something that, when it's like a tool that we can use next session to say, okay, let's put some different inputs into the formula and see what happens. Is that, is that kind of...
Exactly, yep.
And I'd like to be able to, as Elizabeth said, be on the line with her and say, we want something that's useful, not just as a one-time report, but as a tool that we can take back next year.
Yep, that makes sense.
Very good.
So I would move to approve the Northland Fiscal Disparities Report Proposal in the amount of $5,750.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And lastly, on the agenda under my report is the Northwest Quad Grant Application for the pre-development grant. There are two grant programs currently that Anoka County is, is looking at using their ARPA dollars. They have allocated $250,000 for a pre-development application, and they're also put $250,000 aside for what they call a shovel-ready grant permit. I'd like to apply for the Northwest Quadrant, as we discussed yesterday in the workshop forward, so that we could get dollars back or towards a preliminary plat, some, a Phase 1 environmental and wetland delineation. The grants are up to $15,000. So I did get a quote back from Woodseth for the plating and the wetland delineation, and that came back at $11,000. And when I talked to Gregory, he thought the environmental Phase 1, and I don't know, Kevin or Bill, whether you know what the latest dollar values are, but he thought it would be somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 to do a Phase 1 on that property.
$3,500 might be the upper end.
So we would still, that would still then, if I got a quote, still bring us up just about to the 15,000, which is the upper end of that grant program. The grant requirement does require me to get support from the council and then put it into the grant packet, so I'd like the authorization to move forward with that application. If there's other documentation that we need, I can bring it back to you on April 26th, because the deadline for the grant application is May 4th.
So this all happened pretty quickly, correct?
Yes, and, and he indicated to me that they were going to have answers two or three weeks, and they would have answers to whether or not you got the, the grant dollars. He did also tell me, however, I could not start work until I got the grant dollars. So it's not like I can start now and, and then wait, you have to wait till the, if you, if you start beforehand, you nullify your application.
So I'll make the motion to approve the Northwest Quad Project to Anoka County Pre-Development Grant Program for Plating, Wetland Delineation, and Phase 1 Environmental Work. Is there a second?
Ron, I'll second it.
Any other questions, anyone? I'll call for the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
I have nothing further.
Then we're on to Letter E, announcements and reminders. Columbus Local Board of Appeal and Equalization Meeting is on the 18th at 6:00. Joint City Council and Planning Commission is on the 19th at 6:00. City Council Meeting is on the 26th at 6:00, and the calendar of meetings is on the back. Is there anything else anyone would like to?
I, I did, I did receive the report from the county, so if anyone is interested in a paper report, I have copies, and I can give them all to you. I do plan to have an agenda out this Friday for, for next Tuesday, but if you want the report beforehand, again, I have paper copies.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to adjourn our meeting.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Call the vote.
Ron, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. Our meeting is adjourned.